Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I think we're about to get started. We actually have a quorum, and it's only 7:10. So, thank you all. Thank you, everybody, for being prompt this evening. We really appreciate it. It's going to be a very -- we have a lot of articles in the warrant this evening, so it's going to be a very busy evening. So, I really appreciate everybody being on time and getting started. So, anyway, good evening. Welcome to the annual town meeting of the Town of Easton. I'm the town moderator, Kate Welch. And up on stage with me this evening are two town council. We have Jay Talerman and Liz Lyden and Danielle Sicard, who's our town clerk. Down on the left, my left or right, is the Finance Committee. And down in front of me, on your left, is the Board of Selectmen. So, again, I just want to go over a couple of housekeeping matters. Everybody who is a resident must have checked in when you came in. And when you came in and checked in, if you are a voter, you would have gotten one of these orange cards. These become significant, as we all know, because when we ask for a vote, I need everybody to raise their orange card so we can see what kind of a vote we have, whether it's, you know, majority, two-thirds, what have you. And also, it becomes important when you vote against an article as well. So, non-residents are allowed to be here this evening. We have one section over here, down at the bottom, to my right, again, to your left, okay? And I'm just going to remind everybody that we have microphones, kind of on the mezzanine level, if you will, two microphones for individuals to speak when it is appropriate. As far as speaking this evening, again, we have thirty-three, thirty-four articles, thirty-four articles to get through this evening. So, I'm sure we want to make it through all of those articles this evening, which we're going to do. And I want you to remember that when you could get up to speak, please introduce yourself by telling us your name and your address, because Danielle is recording everything, and she needs to take appropriate minutes, and she needs everybody's address before you speak. Again, regarding speaking, you, for any given article, you'll only have one opportunity to speak, just one opportunity. So, I want you to make sure that when you get up to speak, you gather all of your thoughts, make sure you know what you're going to say, before you get to that microphone and speak. Again, as I say, every single town meeting, I'm not going to tolerate any type of cross-examination or going back and forth between speakers. Everything is directed up here to the town moderator when you're speaking at the microphone. And residents only will be able to speak this evening. Again, we have a lot of articles, and we need to get through them, okay? So, again, we have a quorum. It's a hundred and -- it's got to be a hundred and sixty at this point, right?
Hundred and seventy.
Hundred and seventy-eight, which is great. Thank you all again. Today is May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and it is now seven twelve in the evening. The annual town meeting for the Town of Easton is called to order. Okay, so, Article One, Select Board Member Folgenetti.
I move that the town vote to accept the reports of the Select Board, Town Administrator, Assessors, Board of Health, Town Clerk, Treasurer, Collector of Taxes, School Committee, Town Accountant, Director of Public Works, and other departments, boards, and committees of the town.
Second.
By way of explanation, this is an annual vote to accept the town report. The Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any comments, questions, concerns relative to Article One? Okay, Article One is a simple majority. All of those in favor of Article One, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed to Article One passing, raise your orange card. And Article One passes by a majority. Article Two?
I move that the town vote to amend subsection twenty-six dot six, Departmental Revolving Funds, Section E, Authorized Revolving Fund of the Chapter Twenty-Six Financial Affairs Bylaw of the Town of Easton General Bylaws, by adding an additional revolving fund known as the Fire slash EMS Vehicle Maintenance and Equipment Revolving Fund, and to authorize the town, the total expenditure limits for the revolving funds as printed in the warrant under Article Two pursuant to general law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three-E and a Half, for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two, to be expended in accordance with the bylaws heretofore approved.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article amends the bylaw to add an additional revolving fund for the Fire and Rescue Department, and sets the annual spending limits for all revolving funds established pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three-E and a Half. Actual expenditures cannot exceed the balance in the fund, even if the expenditures are less than the established limits. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Number Two? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote. Again, Article Number Two requires a simple majority to pass. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed to Article Two, please raise your orange card. And Article Two passes by a majority. Article Three?
I move that the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Section one oh eight of Chapter Forty-One of the general laws as printed in the warrant.
Second.
By explanation, this is an annual article required by statute to set the salary levels for all compensated elected officials. Select Board recommend.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Three? Okay, seeing none, we'll move, take a vote. This, again, requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article Three passes by a majority. Article Four?
I move to dismiss Article Four.
Second.
By way of explanation, there are no prior year bills to be paid at this time. And so, the dismissal requires a simple majority. All those in favor of Article Four being dismissed, please raise your orange card. And all those opposed, please raise your orange card. Article Four is dismissed. Article Five?
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars to supplement the following fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budgets as follows: Select Board, two thousand dollars; Town Accountant, two thousand dollars; Police, seventy thousand dollars; Inspeccional Services, sixteen thousand dollars; DPW Administration, one hundred thousand dollars, for a total of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And that to meet this appropriation, sixty thousand dollars shall be transferred from fiscal year two thousand twenty-two reserve account, and one hundred and thirty thousand shall be transferred from free cash.
Second.
The explanation is, the Select Board requires two thousand dollars for remote meeting access fees previously paid for out of federal grants. The Town Accountant requires two thousand dollars for increases in training costs. The Police budget requires seventy thousand dollars for additional overtime costs due to injuries and deployments. Inspeccional Services requires sixteen thousand dollars related to increased inspection volume. And the Department of Public Works requires seventy-five thousand dollars to cover this winter's snow and ice deficit, and twenty-five thousand dollars for increased overtime costs. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Number Five?
Yes. What is the current balance?
Sir, sir, if you have to go up to the microphone, if you would, please, so that everybody can hear you. And then, please tell us your name and your address.
Bob Hicks, Daniel Drive. Question, what is the current balance before appropriations of free cash?
Before the appropriations contained in tonight's warrant, roughly two point one million.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Number Five? Okay, seeing none. Article Number Five requires a simple majority to pass. All of those in favor of Article Number Five, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article Five passes by a majority. Article Six?
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of twenty thousand dollars from free cash to be placed into the Unemployment Trust Fund.
Second.
By way of explanation, the town is self-insured for unemployment claims, which are paid for out of an Unemployment Trust Fund. The balance is below twenty thousand dollars and needs to be replenished with additional funds. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Six? Okay, seeing none. Article Six requires a simple majority to pass. All of those in favor of Article Six, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article Six passes by a majority. Article Seven?
Good evening. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of ninety-four million, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars, of which eighty-six thousand, eighty-six million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-three shall be raised from taxation. Eight hundred thousand, five eighty-four shall be transferred from free cash. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars shall be transferred for the American Rescue Plan Act State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. Hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars shall be transferred from septic betterments receipts reserved for appropriation. Three point four one oh, two fifty-nine shall be transferred from the water enterprise receipts. Eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and three dollars shall solid waste and recycling enterprise receipts. And seven hundred thousand dollars shall be transferred from the cable franchise and related revenue enterprise receipts, all to meet the town charges, including the salaries of several elected and appointed officers in the, of the town for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, as printed in the warrant under Article Seven. By way of explanation, this is the annual operating budget for the town. The town administrator and others will make a presentation of town meeting regard, two-town meeting regarding this proposal.
So, prior to going any further, Select Board Member Barger, I believe that you missed a line when you were reading the motion. So, I'm going to ask, sorry, I'm going to ask you to read it again, if you don't mind.
The whole motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I apologize.
That's okay.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of ninety-four million, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars, of which eighty-six million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-three shall be raised from taxation. Eight hundred thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars shall be transferred from free cash. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars should be transferred from the American Rescue Plan Act State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. Hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars shall be transferred from the septic betterment receipt reserved for appropriation. Three million, four hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand shall be transferred from the water enterprise receipts. Eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and three dollars shall, shall be transferred from sewer enterprise receipts. One point five nine two, two hundred and eleven dollars shall be transferred from solid waste and recycling enterprise receipts. And seven hundred thousand shall be transferred from cable franchise and related revenue enterprise receipts, all to meet the town charges, including the salaries of several elected and appointed officers of the town for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, as printed in the warrant under Article Seven.
Second.
By way of explanation, this is the annual operating budget for the town. The town administrator and others will make a presentation at town meeting regarding this proposal.
Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
And Finance Committee?
And Finance Committee recommends.
So, prior to commenting or asking any questions, I'm going to read all the budget line items. If anybody has any questions or comments or concerns on any one budget line item, I want you to hold, yellow, hold for that particular line item, okay? And then, and then we'll go back and have a discussion on those, okay? I believe that Mr. Reed wants to make a presentation first, right?
People would rather I not have had one. It's your call.
I can read through first.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so everybody get that. I'm going to read each line item. And if you have a question, comment, or concern on any one line item, I want you to yell out "hold," right? And then we'll go back and address, we'll vote on the ones that are not held, and we'll address the ones that are held, okay? All right. Select Board?
For information, are we, are we voting on these things now, or are we in presentation now, computer?
So, we're going to go through each line item right now, and then we'll go back and do a presentation.
Okay, so we're in presentation, after all?
Right, right, right.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Select Board, Finance Committee, Reserve Fund, Accountant, Assessors, Town Collector slash Treasurer, Town Council, Information Technology, Town Clerk, Planning and Economic Development, Police, Public Safety Dispatch, Fire and Rescue, Inspeccional Services, Regional and County School Assessments, DPW Administration, Health and Community Services, Library, Maturing Debt and Interest, Employee Benefits and Insurance, Other General Government, School Department, Sewer Department Enterprise, Water Division Enterprise, Solid Waste and Recycling Enterprise, PEG Access and Cable Related Fees Enterprise. So, no holds, correct? So, no presentation necessary, I guess. Unless everybody, anybody want to see a presentation, I guess no presentation necessary. Okay, so. Connor, I'm so sorry.
Is the presentation available offline?
All right, we will put it there as soon as this is over, yes.
Okay, okay. So, Article Seven, Select Board recommended earlier, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Finance Committee, yes. Okay, so, any comments, questions, or concerns relative to Article Number Seven? This, Article Number Seven, requires a simple majority to pass. All of those in favor of Article Seven passing, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed to Article Number Seven passing, please raise your orange card. And Article Seven passes by a majority. Article Eight?
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of four million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of meeting the capital budget needs of the town for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, as listed in the warrant under Article Eight. And that to meet this appropriation, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars shall be transferred from free cash. Two hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-four shall be transferred from surplus funds voted pursuant to Article Four of the November thirteenth, two thousand seventeen special town meeting. Ninety-one thousand should be transferred from available mitigation funds. Three hundred and four thousand should be transferred from water surplus. And that the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow three million, nine hundred and one thousand dollars for the three hooklift replacements, loader replacements, water main replacement, and bay road water storage, restor, run, runner storage tank restoration under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, or any other enabling authority, provided that in accordance with Chapter Forty-Four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes therunto, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium as applied. And to authorize the Select Board to do or take all action necessary to carry out these projects on behalf of or in the name of the town.
Second.
By way of explanation, this is the annual capital budget for the town. Funding sources are long-term borrowing and available funds. A two-thirds majority vote is required for borrowing. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Eight?
Hi, Andrew Abramson for Flint Lane. I was wondering if someone from the Police Department could explain why we're funding a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars' worth of tasers?
Good evening, Keith Boone from the Police Department. I don't know where the question was directed. Oh, so, we have enacted tasers back in two thousand fifteen, and this is a replacement cost for re-equiping our offices with them. They're end of life for the most part.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Paul Worland, Lincoln Street, totally different question. When you were talking about sources of funding, you said something about approximately three million dollars of borrowing. I can see that there, the one-five, one-five, and two-forty, I'll say borrowing there, and maybe some other things above. But the total amount is four point nine. But when you were saying where the source of funds were, there's also three million dollars coming from the Water Department in addition to borrowing. And I just add three and three and get six, which is more than five. So, are we move appropriating more money or authorizing more borrowing than we need for just this year's capital budget? Or am I doing the math wrong?
I respectfully hope you were doing the math wrong.
That's what I'm hoping, too. I just, I heard three, and then I heard another three. Did I hear that wrong?
I, I think so. The motion has three, three point nine oh one million for borrowing.
Right.
And so, that spans, that authorization, and Wendy, correct me wrong, spans both the general fund and the enterprise fund borrowing authorizations that you see up here?
And that, that matches. I also thought, I heard when, when it's something about three million dollars coming from a water fund? Or is that, did I just get that completely wrong?
Three hundred and four thousand.
Three hundred, not three million. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Eight? Okay, seeing none. Article Eight needs a two-thirds majority to pass. All of those in favor of Article Eight passing, please raise your orange cards. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article Eight passes by two-thirds majority. Article Nine?
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to accept from Sawmill Village LLC temporary and permanent easements necessary for the construction of improvements at the intersection of Foundry Street and Paquannicket Avenue, as shown on plans on file with the Town Clerk's office.
Second.
By way of explanation, Sawmill Village's LLC is a forty-four lot subdivision proposed to redevelop the site of the old Foundry site at five sixty Foundry Street, and situated across from the intersection of Paquannicket Avenue and Foundry Street. In order to address the anticipated traffic impacts of the project, Robert R. Lincoln, as manager, member of Sawmill Village LLC, has agreed to install intersection improvements, including signalization for the entry to the project and the intersection of Foundry Street and Paquannicket Avenue, and to convey all necessary temporary and permanent easements to the town associated with the approved design and construction plan for the intersection improvement. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
I see a question.
Bob Hicks, one, Daniel Drive. Is the site polluted?
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that again? I couldn't, I couldn't hear it, Bob.
Yes. I asked if this site is polluted. I mean, the Foundry was operating there since roughly seventeen seventy or so, and there's all sorts of metal fragments. Is this particular area under a potential easement polluted?
You want to answer that, right?
So, the site, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, the site has impacted soils that have to be removed and remediated as part of their permitting, or has occurred previously. This is not related to the approval of that project. It's going through Conservation Commission, Planning Board, and working with the DEP on any of those aspects. This piece is on the south side of Foundry, which would give an easement for a roadway to widen so that we could have the necessary traffic light installed.
In other words, you're saying that remediation has occurred?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Nine? Seeing none. Article Nine requires a two-thirds majority vote. All of those in favor of Article Nine passing, please raise your orange cards. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article Nine passes by two-thirds majority. Article Ten?
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to grant an easement for the installation of underground electrical utilities in a property known and numbered as Twelve Red Mill Road.
Second.
By way of explanation, this easement has been requested by the National Grid for the installation of underground electrical services to the future Red Mill Road Water Treatment Plant, which is currently under construction. The property in question is town-owned, and the easement is necessary to provide utilities to the building. A plan depicting the easement is on file with the Select Board's office. Select Board recommend.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Ten? Okay, seeing none. Article Ten requires a two-thirds majority. In order to pass, all of those in favor of Article Ten, please raise your orange cards. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article Ten passes by two-thirds majority. Article Eleven?
I move the town vote to amend its general bylaws by adopting a payment agreement bylaw as permitted by Mass General Law, Chapter Sixty, Section Sixty-Two A, as printed in the warrant under Article Eleven, and to authorize the Town Clerk to insert chapter and section numbers as necessary for the inclusion in the Eastern Code.
Second.
By way of explanation, at present, Mass General Law, Chapter Sixty, Section Fifteen, limits the waiver of interest to fifteen dollars. There are occasionally circumstances where it behooves the town to waive more interest on a property in tax title for the ultimate benefit of the town. Acceptance of this article would enable the Collector Treasurer to enter into written agreements to release tax title while not creating an insurmountable burden to the taxpayers. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Eleven? Seeing none. Article Eleven requires a simple majority. All of those in favor, please raise your orange cards. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article Eleven passes by majority. Article Twelve?
I move the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Two Hundred A, Section Nine A, to authorize the Treasurer to utilize alternate procedures for disposing of abandoned funds held in the custody of the town as provided for in Mass General Law, Chapter Two Hundred, Section Nine A, small b.
Second.
By way of explanation, acceptance of this section will provide an expedited process for voiding checks that are stale-dated, lost, or uncashed for any reason for more than one year past the date of issuance. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
And just by way of clarification, Select Board Member Barger, it is, as provided for in Mass General Law, Chapter Two Hundred A, Section Nine A, little b, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding Article Twelve? Seeing none. Article Twelve requires a simple majority. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article Twelve passes by majority. Article Thirteen?
Good evening. I move that the town vote to amend Chapter Two Twenty-Seven of the General Bylaws of the Town of Easton as printed in the warrant under Article Thirteen.
Second.
By way of explanation, there are certain minor, there are certain minor projects that will not have a negative impact on wetland resource areas. For example, currently, a homeowner would need a permit to replace or move their shed from one side of the yard to another. Another example is replacing or repairing a deck that is within an existing lawn more than fifty feet from a wetland. Planting trees within the buffer zone, repairing existing roads, traffic signals, septic system per, perk tests, currently all require permits under the bylaw. These minor projects can be exempted similar to the state law, or can be administratively approved with a site inspection under the proposed bylaw revision, reducing the permitting, time, and financial burden on the homeowners.
Select Board? Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments? I see a question or a comment.
Hi, thank you. Kyla Bennett, 2 Chickadee Lane. I agree with the intent of what this article is trying to do, but it is written in an overly broad manner, and therefore I want to make a motion to amend.
Okay, so I'm sorry, Ms. Bennett. One of the things I did not address at the beginning of the meeting is all amendments we need to have in writing.
I have it, I have it in writing. I just wanted to explain first, and then I'll bring it up to you. What the intent of this was, was to specifically mirror the Wetlands Protection Act. The way it works in Massachusetts is the State Wetlands Protection Act is one set of regulations, and then towns can have their own bylaws. Easton has a bylaw which is stricter than the Wetlands Protection Act, which is a good thing. In this case, the Conservation Commission wants to mirror the Wetlands Protection Act and make it easier on residents, which is fine. I agree wholeheartedly. But what they want to do is not require permits for certain activities within buffer zones, and that is at Section 310 CMR 10.02 (2). The way the article is written, just saying 310 CMR 10.00, that would include all the exceptions in the Wetlands Protection Act, and there are 68 of them. That is not the intent of the Conservation Commission. I would vehemently oppose that, and therefore, my motion to amend, which I will bring to you in writing, is simply to change the language from, right now, it says the exceptions provided in the Wetlands Protection Act and Regulations 310 CMR 10.00 shall apply under this chapter. I move to amend it to say the exceptions provided in the Wetlands Protection Act and Regulations 310 CMR 10.02 (2) and parentheses shall apply under this chapter.
So if you could, if you could bring it up here, you have it written down? Okay. We just want to be absolutely clear for the record.
I just want to say that Kyla Bennett is an environmental lawyer. Oh, Laura Fogel, 5 Chickadee Lane. I just want to say Kyle is an environmental lawyer and knows this stuff, and if you don't want the whole town clear-cut, you should vote for what she's saying.
Can I just see? Might I ask her for clarification? It says, "Other than stated in this section, the exceptions shall not apply." So that, so that what it says is all of them, none of them shall apply unless we specifically say they apply. And then she says
The exceptions provided.
Shall apply. So that's right. She's right. Jennifer Carter, she's the commentator.
So I understand the amendment. We just wanted to clarify and go over it. I just want to see if anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns on the amendment. Go ahead.
Hi, Jennifer Carlino, land use and environmental planner. Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. I anticipate that the Conservation Commission would not have an issue with the amendment. Thank you.
Okay, so just so everybody understands the amendment, so
Do you want me to read it?
If you want to read it, Mr. Lamb, so it's actually just read the entire thing.
Okay.
Because the only part that
Not necessary, she made a motion.
Okay, I'm just going to have Mr. Lamb read it as the amendment has been put in, so everybody understands, because we need to vote on the amendment first before
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, yep.
Okay. Amendment of Wetland Protection Bylaw to include minor project exemptions consistent with Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act Regulations 310 CMR 10.00. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 227 of the general bylaw of the Town of Easton as follows, subsection D of 227-3, "Exception," which currently reads, "Other than stated in this section, the exceptions provided in the Wetland Protection Act and Regulations 310 CMR 10.00 shall not apply under this chapter," shall be amended to read as follows. The exception, the exceptions provided in the Wetland Protection Act and Regulations 310 CMR 10.02-2 shall apply under this chapter.
Okay, so does everybody understand? It's just a change of the, of the second CMR, to be more specific. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Question on the amendment?
I'm sorry?
Has the Conservation Committee voted on this, on the amendment?
So the amendment is now before everybody here, the town.
That is not my question. My question is, has the Conservation Commission voted on the amendment?
So the agent just stood up. Go ahead, Connor.
Is, are you asking about the initial proposed amendment prior to the correction that's listed?
No, I'm asking, I don't know about an initial amendment. I'm simply asking about the amendment presented tonight.
Okay, then, no, they're, they're not, they haven't, they voted on what was in the warrant.
Thank you.
But, but the, Ms. Carlino who just spoke is the staff for the Conservation Commission.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to the amendment now to Article 13? Okay, so we need to all vote on the amendment first, and it's a simple majority. And so it's a simple majority on whether or not the amendment passes as written by Ms. Bennett, okay? So all of those in favor of Article 13 as amended passing, please raise your orange card. Okay. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. Okay. So Article 13 passes by a majority as amended. Thank you. Right.
General bylaw.
Okay, Article 14.
Article 14. Tom, would you like to speak now or before I get into the CPA?
No, no, just the amendment.
Yeah, no, that's why I'm saying
No, no, you now have to take a vote on the whole thing.
Oh, that's what I was trying to say. You took an amendment, you took a vote on the amendment.
Sure, now we have to vote on the whole thing.
Okay.
All right, so I'm sorry, and I made a mistake with regards to the amendment. We have to go back to Article 13. We voted on the amendment passing, but now we need to vote on whether or not the entire article, you all think the entire article should pass, and that's by a simple majority as amended, okay, if that makes any sense. So all those in favor of the Article 13 passing as amended, please raise your orange card. Thank you, and all those opposed, please raise your orange card. All right, so now Article 13 passes as amended, as amended. Sorry, I skipped a step. All right, Article 14.
So I think for Article 14, we have Tom Bressard going to present a little bit on CPA.
Good evening, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you here tonight. The next series of articles relate to community preservation items, and as Chair of the Town CPC, I want to take a brief moment to highlight some key points about the CPA. I am acutely aware that with no budget presentation, I believe my few slides now will be the largest presentation of the night, so I will endeavor to be brief but informative, and cheers to me for winning that bet. First, the Community Preservation Act is a state legislation. It was signed into state law in September of 2000. It's a very important smart growth tool that enables communities to focus on preserving open space, historic sites, the creation of affordable housing, the development of outdoor recreational facilities, and in fact, we are required to focus on those. The state provides different levels of matching funds to those raised by the community's property tax surcharge, and for Easton, we've been fortunate to receive just about 30% of the funds that we as residents contributed. I'm proud to say the Town of Easton adopted in 2001 very quickly a 3% property tax surcharge, which is the maximum afforded by the state legislation, and I do want to highlight that there are exemptions for low income and for the first $100,000 of property tax. From a state perspective, again, speaking for the state to the importance of this program, 189 cities and towns have adopted the CPA, again, proud that Easton was amongst the first. It has contributed approximately $2.65 billion across the state, impacting over 33,000 acres of open space, 3,000 outdoor recreation projects, 8,700 housing units have been created in an affordable way, and 14,700 affordable housing units have been supported, and there has been the historic preservation of over 6,300 projects. Oh, perfect, too, I was moving the slides. From the 2001 Easton CPA announcement, we have had over $32,618,000 worth of funds raised, $19,809,000 via property taxes, 9.7 million of state matching funds, and the investment that we've been able to earn on these assets through time is 3.1 million. And then since 2001, the residents of the town have voted to fund just shy of $24.6 million worth of projects, and hopefully you know some of the very important ones, and I'll give just examples because they're all very important and make an impact, but Keach Fields, Alley's Park, Queesit House, the shovel shop development are amongst the few, and certainly all of the outdoor space projects that we've been able to maintain. Tonight, the next series of articles are all items, there's eight of them, that the Community Preservation Committee unanimously recommended, that are being brought, that were brought to us, in many cases by residents of the town, for approval here tonight at town meeting. They include support of the Affordable Housing Trust, the historic preservation of the Town Hall, exterior restoration project, the recreational project at Unionville Field Pickleball Courts, historic preservation of the southeast and cemetery fence, the Foundry Street historic fence, Oaks Ames Memorial Hall, and open space preservation at 55 and 59 Pond Street. And I do want to emphasize again that they were all voted unanimously in support by the CPC. And lastly, before I go in this section, I do want to thank and recognize the members of the CPC, our town partners that play a big role in all of these projects, and lastly, you our residents, both for the generation of these important projects, and certainly for your support and voting at all of these town meetings that we've had since 2001. These projects make a very big difference in impact in preserving what I believe is very important to our town and our community, namely our support of affordable housing, the diversity that that enables us, the recreation and open space preservation that means so much to us, especially given the 38 Eagle Scouts our town has put forth. I think if you go to those websites, you'll see plenty more names and projects that they developed. And lastly, certainly the historic preservation that I believe makes the Town of Easton as unique as it possibly could be. So with that, I believe Article 14 is up next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, Article 14. I move that the town vote to act on the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to reserve for later appropriation additional monies from the fiscal 2022 annual budgeted reserve for the purpose as printed in the warrant, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation.
Second.
By way of explanation, the Community Preservation Fund received a fiscal 2022 state trust fund distribution well in excess of the estimated amount, which needs to be reserved in each of the three spending categories to meet legal requirements. The amounts to be reserved in each category is $47,570, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 14? Okay, seeing none, Article 14 requires a simple majority vote. All of those in favor of Article 14, please raise your orange cards. Thank you. All of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article 14 passes by a majority. Article 15.
I move that the town vote to appropriate a reserve from Community Preservation Fund annual revenues, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for administrative expenses, community preservation projects, the payment of debt service, and other expenses in fiscal year 2023, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation as all as printed in the warrant.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article proposes the fiscal year 2023 budget for the Community Preservation Committee. Amounts to be funded shall be considered separate appropriations.
Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 15? Seeing none, Article 15 requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise those orange cards, and all those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article 15 passes by a majority. Article 16.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of $202,500 from Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2023 annual revenues to be transferred to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article would fund the Affordable Housing Trust activities for fiscal year 2023. The trust works to implement the goals and strategies of Easton's state-mandated housing production plan, and to provide resources and affordable housing options to low and moderate-income residents. Fiscal year 2023 activities will include funding of the Home Buyer Assistance Program, support for a nonprofit developer to create affordable family housing on Paquannicket Avenue and Morse Road, and support for planning work and related administration for the town to meet its Chapter 40B requirements. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 16? Seeing none, Article 16 requires a simple majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise those orange cards, and all of those opposed, please raise the orange cards. And Article 16 passes by a majority. Article 17.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of $225,000 from Community Preservation Funds reserved for historic purposes to restore the exterior of Easton Town Hall.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article will provide the supplemental funding for the comprehensive restoration of the exterior of the historic Easton Town Hall, the former wayside estate. Construction costs increase, increases related to the ongoing pandemic, more extensive asbestos, contamination in the windows, and continued gutter and cornice deterioration requiring that the gutters and associated woodwork be replaced rather than relined and repaired, have increased total construction costs. The original $1.45 million, million on November 30, 2020 special town meeting appropriation will fund roof, gutter, and cornice restoration, rear, south entrance, and windows, and windows restoration, and the front north entrance and portico restoration, and front north first floor and second floor window restoration. These additional funds will allow restoration of the side, east and west, windows, and other exterior and interior features and elements. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 17?
Paul Rohr, 11 Lincoln Street. I want to congratulate whoever the project manager was that in a year and a half of pandemic costs, it's only up by 15%. That's really good. Nice job.
We'll take it.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 17? Okay, seeing none. Article 17 requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please raise those orange cards. All of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. So 17, Article 17 passes by a majority. Article 18.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of $253,650 from the Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2023 annual revenues for constructing up to six new pickleball courts with associated fencing, access paths, expanded parking, and site drainage at Unionville Field.
Second.
By way of explanation, the November 30, 2020 special town meeting approved $320,000 for this project. Bids received in June 2021 were significantly above the funded amount. The project scope has been revised and the cost estimates updated to reflect the unanticipated pandemic-related price increases. This article will cover the additional cost of constructing up to six new pickleball courts with associated fencing, access paths, expanded parking, and site drainage at Unionville Field for a total estimated project cost of $573,650 to help meet the recreational needs of all Easton residents. The project has been rebid and bids were received on April 12, 2022, and this proposed supplement will be sufficient to cover project costs. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee? Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 18?
Yes, Jack Doherty, 10 Dean Street. I want to thank all those that are involved in providing the additional funding. We really appreciate it. My question is more on the next phase. If you look at the Union Villa Field, and you look at the dilapidated tennis courts and the rundown basketball court, I don't know whether anybody's looking at those as an additional enhancement in the future. Just wanted to throw that out as a concern. Thank you.
Understood.
Was that a question? Is there a response? I don't want to interrupt.
I failed to introduce myself earlier. Stephanie Danielson, I'm the Director of Planning and Economic Development. Not at this time, but I do believe the Recreation Commission, the Recreation Commission will consider that at some point in the future.
Paul Ror 11 Lincoln Street, same comment, not as big a compliment. The original quote was 320, this is over by 253, which by my math is just under 70%. Is that outdoor construction is harder to estimate in this timeframe, or we just missed? Do we have a, do we have a rough sense?
You got this? Sure. And Stephanie can back me, and Greg, you can certainly help. I, I don't think it was just, oh, sorry about that. Perfect. I don't think it was just a miss. I think when we first thought of this, it was at a point in time just before, with the pandemic, given the timing that happened, and that when we received the bids back, they were dramatically over. We have received bids for this, Paul, Mr. Ror, and I do believe that right now, we believe with this funding, it should without question cover us with a good contingency, enable us to complete the project. We're hopeful that there would be some unused funds at the end of it. We don't know until we get through it, but if it was, then those would be able to be re-appropriated back into the general CPC funds.
Thank you. I was just checking because both were appropriated at the same town meeting. Maybe the bids came in at different times, or just, it was just a miss. I just wanted to figure out, as we're planning for reserves for future things or contingencies, is this just a pandemic miss, or do we have any potential of this large a miss for future projects as we're going forward? I'm just trying, trying to get a handle on that.
That's a great question, and I will say, in working with our DPW partners, that part of our approach for the CPC is to try to obtain beds, bids as close as possible to when we come and present to the town, so we have a much higher degree of accuracy. And in that way, we are able to control, we believe, the cost structure not have to come back to town meeting for very important projects that have the support of the residents the first go around. So I think that's fair. I think we were fortunate on the front end, and we did a great job, and credit to those folks that are handling the town restoration project. I know it's pretty big, honestly. I think it's one of the largest that they've handled, and are doing a great job of it. And the pickleball fields, we had the opposite experience where the cost of the materials and the cost of the vendors and contractors, especially at that point in time for the previous bids, was a challenge. But we have taken some good learning from this particular point specifically, so that hopefully we'll have more accurate bids on a go-forward basis that we can leverage.
Sweet. Also, this is outdoors, and for our November town meetings, you can only get it so close in time, I guess.
Fair point, yeah. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 18? Seeing none, Article 18 requires a simple majority. All of those in favor of Article 18 passing, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article 18 passes by a majority. Article 19.
It's a nice way to start. It's all for me. I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of $105,500 from the, from Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2023 annual revenues for the purpose of completing the restoration and reconstruction of Southeaston Cemetery's historic iron fence.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article would provide $105,500, just to note that the article, the amount of funded here is as written in the article, not the explanation, that's a typo, but just clarifying that, in funding to replicate approximately 90 feet of iron fence and install 14 concrete fence footings for the missing northern third of the cemetery's circa 1850s iron fence along Washington Street, and fabricate two additional sections to be stored against future damage and replacement, completing the historic preservation project begun in 2019 that has restored the southern two-thirds of the fence. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Questions, comments, or concerns?
Hi, Laura Fogel, 5 Chickadee Lane. Look, I like cemeteries, I like iron fences, I like history, I like honoring the dead, but it seems like this is a lot of money, and I don't, and I guess the town is rolling in money right now, but I'm just wondering why we aren't spending this money like for things like dog parks? I mean, do we have to do like $100,000 iron fencing? I mean, I, you know, I, I, I have no problems with renovating beautiful cemeteries, but seems to me like this money could be used for like more useful things like dog parks.
I think just in response, and I appreciate the expression of sentiment, I'll try to channel my inner Ed Hands, as I've learned an awful lot too, and I think it also gets to the essence of what the CPA is designed to do. It is to actually enable a community like ours to preserve historical artifacts like this fence that are so unique to our town. When you look at that age, in terms of the age of the fence of 1850s, it brings us back to the fact that Easton was fundamentally a foundry as part of its heritage, and that if not us, but who, I would say, to protect these items for future generations to appreciate their one-of-a-kind nature. They are, I think, Ed, it's fair to say, truly pieces of art that will never be created. And I only take the time to speak to this particular fence because there is another fence article to follow, and the same logic will apply. So I don't think that there is a way for us to, to enable future generations to appreciate that their town was fundamentally built on foundries like Foundry Street, the Beltray Iron Works, and that we are fortunate to have De Angelis Iron Works in our own community who does a great amount of work. And just in relation to other parks, I think it's a great way to highlight for everybody that anybody can file an application. So if there's a request for recreation, or for additional fields, for other opportunities, please know that you can go to the CPA website. There are forms and applications, and we are happy to consider any and all. So just a little context for the historic nature of the two fences you're about to hear.
I, I just want to say you can use CPA money for dog parks, and it is a lot of expense, and there's a lot of planning involved, and I would just like to see that. I'm making my official request here. I think a lot of people on Facebook regularly talk about it, you know? I don't think they're pining for iron fences.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 19? Okay, seeing none, Article 19 requires a simple majority. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article 19 passes by a majority. Article 20.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of $260,000 from Community Preservation Unreserved Fund Balance to repair and restore the historic 19th century iron fence located at 555 Foundry Street and listed on Assessor's Map 44U as Lot 25, and to authorize the Select Board to accept and/or convey a permanent historic preservation restriction on said property pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 44B and Mass General Law Chapter 184.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article would provide $260,000 in funding to restore the early 19th century historic iron fence installed at the historic Leech House at 555 Foundry Street, which is a contributing resource within the Furnace Village National Register Historic District. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 20?
Bob Hex, Daniel Drive, who owns this property?
It's privately owned by Rick Lincoln.
It is not owned by the town?
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Just to add color to that last comment, though.
One, one second.
Sorry.
Please, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'll be brief. Just so that you know, though, I think that's a, a good question on who owns it. We are ensuring that the language is such that the fence would be preserved and insured, regardless of who owns it, for full replacement cost, so that the town gets the benefit of that asset. And I believe everybody is aware they have the intentions to create a corridor of walking through that area, and that there is some town land that we are looking to also convert into a park that's close by, and this could become a central feature of folks walking in that area that we have done, as a town, a lot of planning on. So just so that you know.
Is the owner participating in this Article 20 activity?
I'm not sure. I believe he is. I don't know the amount, or, I'm sorry? $23,000 by himself privately? Good question.
Next question?
Do you want to go first?
I, I can wait, I'm patient.
Okay. Dennis Gibson, 185 Lincoln. I know that the owner bought it for $840,000, and he has split the lot, he's building two houses that are under agreement for 800 and, I think it's 849,000 and 899,000, and I wonder why we have to pay 260,000. Oh, he also listed the first floor as a condo for 760,000. So I'm just wondering why we have to put up 260,000. That's it.
That's a fair question, and from the town perspective, we are actually acquiring the preservation of it, the conservation restriction, which would preserve that fence in its current format, replace it, and then we would get the benefit as a town and a community of it. So the, the fact that there happens to be a private individual, while we're appreciative of his contribution as well, what he is doing with his private land is well within his rights, and certainly goes through town planning and all the appropriate steps of government. I do want to emphasize, he certainly could just take down the fence. So that was part of what, the approach for us and the opportunity from a historical perspective.
Laura Fogel, 5 Chickadee Lane. Personally, I can't afford to build a fence on my property. I pay into the CPA fund. I'm voting no on this because I don't really want to fund so much money for somebody else's private fence.
Ed Hands, 20 Purchase Street. In a sense, this particular fence would become our fence because it would be protected in perpetuity. We're getting a preservation restriction for it. That's the benefit of spending the money. Yeah, it's a lot of money. If we had a better picture of this fence, you would see that unlike the fence at the cemetery, this is unique. It was made in the foundry across the street. It is incredibly detailed, and is expected to add a lot of visual appeal to this area that's finally, after years of neglect, because we spent so much money on Northeaston, is finally getting its turn. So I can, I can understand the objection on the, on the cemetery fence. This one is a much more valuable historical artifact, and I believe a dog park is something that we need in town as well. And just like the pickleball people, anybody who wants to come forward with a proposal on that will definitely be willing to work with you on that. And you won't have to listen to the wags here that suggested that the cemetery would be a great place for a dog park because there's lots of bones there.
Dale Carister, 21 South Street. I'm speaking in favor of this project. I'm a resident of this area. It's the Furnace Village Historic District, and there are a lot of beautiful old homes there, and this particular fencing is one of the signature historic elements in the neighborhood. It's also one of the first things that you see as you're traveling on 106, and the town is planning a lot of sort of exciting development in this area to preserve the historic, including also some work with respect to the Swift Park, which is the park immediately adjacent to that fence right on the other side of Paquannicket. It's, it's a very, very important signature piece for the neighborhood, but also for the town generally, and I'm urging folks to vote in favor. Thank you.
Hi, Greg Strange, 201 Paquannicket. I guess I'll speak as a historical board member very quickly. So Rick Lincoln purchased this property, taking advantage of some new zoning that this town meeting passed last year, which emphasizes preservation, future, further preservation, and enhanced preservation of a historic district. CPA has been a wonderful tool, tool for the town. It allows us to be indulgent sometimes. We've spent 10,000, 10,600,000 in Northeaston. We've spent $0 in Furnace Village, one of our two oldest neighborhoods in town. If you could, if you could go online, the CPA's on, on ECAT, go to the CPA meeting for this, you can see a few videos. The fence is a piece of art. Now, granted, maybe I'm into that a little more than others, but the, the key behind this, Rick, Rick Lincoln agreed to keep it. He was going to spend, you know, 10 or 15,000 to paint it. The more we looked at it, this is, this was born right next door from the soil in this town, and it's been there for 206 years. Not many people have stuck around in this town that long. 10 years from now, you're going to see sidewalks on that stretch of road, you're going to see enhanced historical buildings, you're going to see some nice new buildings. We're going to have a nice walkable neighborhood, and we're going to have our second vibrant downtown to, to match Northeaston Village. And Ed Hands, or the future Ed Hands of another generation, will be giving tours and talking about this fence. It's a magnificent piece, it's really worth saving. I know, I know, thinking, oh, 260,000, that's crazy, but it, it's not for Mr. Lincoln. He, this, this enhances, not his property, this enhances the district, this enhances all of our properties, and it, trust me, 10 years from now, you'll be very happy that you did this. So I ask you to vote for it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 20? Seeing none, Article 20 requires a simple majority. All of those in favor of Article 20, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card, and Article 20 passes by a majority. Article 21.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of $350,000 from Community Preservation Unreserved Fund Balance for the purpose of funding a conservation restriction at 55 Pond Street and 59 Pond Street listed on Assessor's Map 17U as Lot 2C and on Assessor's Map 17U as Lot 2E respectively, and to authorize the Select Board to accept and/or convey a permanent conservation restriction on said property pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 44B and Mass General Law Chapter 184.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article would provide $350,000 in funding to purchase a conservation restriction on 55 Pond Street and 59 Pond Street with the property to be owned and managed by the trustees of the reservations. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 21?
Paul Ror, Lincoln Street. My eyes may be the only ones getting old, but can someone explain where this is? Because I, that map's incredibly hard to read. Is it on the pond side of the street? Is it on the houses side of the street? Where is this?
Yep, so if you're actually looking at the dam from Governor Ames Estate, and it's the land on the other side of the dam, so it would actually connect Pond Street to the Governor Ames Estate.
So where those private property don't cross here that everyone ignores signs, we can take those signs down and actually go there?
Eventually, after this vote, we'll pass on our chance.
Yay.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 21? Okay, Article 21 requires a simple majority. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card, and Article 21 passes by a majority. Article 22.
So the next series of articles, there are three that relate to Oaks Ames Memorial Hall, so we thought it would be prudent to spend just a few moments to talk about the efforts, the hall itself, and what the overall objectives are. So, next slide. So in terms of the hall, for those of you who have not had the pleasure of going there for Christmas parties, celebrations, weddings, odd events, it really obviously is a piece of the fabric of who Easton is. Not only is it just locally significant, but it's certainly nationally significant. It is a national historic landmark built in the 1870s. It is an H.H. Richardson design.
It is an H.H. Richardson design. Without question, the word iconic comes to mind inimitable. Without question, it's a piece of the fabric of who Easton is. It is also a part of a larger campus. The Oaks Ames Memorial Hall, combined with the Ames Free Library, the Queeset House, are all a very important part of that district. The community support has already been established. I think we all know how important this is. There have previously been seven projects that have totaled $753,000, give or take, in CPA funding over the years, largely repair projects. And the goals of what we're about to start tonight, actually, it's probably been in process for many years, including a 2014 and 2015 master planning session. But the goals are truly to address decades-long backlog of deferred repairs and maintenance, activate the full potential of this iconic gem as an event and public meeting space, certainly to promote ADA accessibility, and to ensure that all of our town residents have the equal opportunity to enjoy this. Lastly, I look at it as an opportunity to set this building up for the next generation of residents of Easton to enjoy, much like we have all had the good fortune to do so. The seven projects that we listed are largely smaller in nature in terms of two items that are less than $20,000, both in brownstone reservation in 2009, and most recently, a firebox upgrade of $8,000. Again, these are items that were approved by us as residents at town meetings. And then some larger ones with masonry repairs, roof and flashing, tower roofs, and again, some design work as well in 2018. Specifically, the renovation project, the three articles to come. One is there are emergency repairs that are needed. Regrettably, recently, you may have all noted or have heard that the hall is currently closed for activity, and that is because, regrettably, there has been some failures in terms of trusses that are structurally required to be safe. So there is an article tonight to get some emergency repairs done so that we can get the hall reopened. The second is to prepare planning documents. So as I mentioned, in 2014 and 2015, there was master planning that has been completed at the hall identifying a series of required needs to take the hall to the next level and bring it current. This requires a comprehensive set of work documents, detailed budgeting, plans, scope definition, and that is an article that you will see tonight. Those documents are really what I believe would be the, to get us to a more complete renovation and preservation. They would include the aforementioned ADA accessibility via an elevator, HVAC and electrical upgrades, kitchen upgrades, structural repairs that are required, site work, including parking and monumental staircase review and repair. So this truly, as I mentioned, is designed so that instead of having, coming before us each year for requests, hopefully, we're able to use a very large project that we would expect to come before you next year in order to take the hall to its, back to, closer to its former state of full glory. And hopefully, I said that well, Mr. Ames. So with that, I believe you'll have Article 22, which is regarding the emergency repairs, Article 23, which is for, again, this year is the construction documents, costs, budgets, and planning. And then lastly is Article 4, which speaks to leasing of town property. 24. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Article 22.
Thank you, Tom. I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of $486,400 from Community Preservation Unreserved Fund Balance for the purpose of emergency structural repairs at Oaks Ames Memorial Hall, located at 3 Barrow Street, and listed on Assessor's Map 16U as Lot 9.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article would provide $486,400 in funding to repair and replace structural ceiling and roof trusses, which have rapidly deteriorated and failed unexpectedly, forcing Oaks Ames Memorial Hall to close to the public. This emergency funding will also repair and restore damaged masonry and joists and repair and repaint damaged trim and ceiling plaster. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 22? Okay. Seeing none, Article 22 requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor of Article 22 passing, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article 22 passes by a majority. Article 23.
Article 23. I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of $507,600 for preparing construction documents and cost estimates for Oaks Ames Memorial Hall as printed in the warrant under Article 23, and that to meet this appropriation, $368,195 shall be raised from Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2023 annual revenues, and $139,405 shall be transferred from Community Preservation Funds reserved for historic resources.
Second.
By way of explanation, within the next few years, Oaks Ames Memorial Hall will seek funding to complete all the remaining work recommended in the 2015 CPA-funded Comprehensive Needs Assessment, which will return this national historic landmark to a state of good repair and install elements that will allow it to support more community and cultural events open to all members of the community and allow it to be more financially self-sustaining. This article would fund preparation of construction documents and cost estimates for completing the interior infrastructure, HVAC and electrical, and finishes restoration, elevator and kitchen, structural repairs, and the site work, including an expanded parking lot and restoration of the grand staircase from Barrow Street to the hall. These construction documents and cost estimates will enable the hall to create an accurate budget, secure funding, and procure contractors to complete all the remaining work to completely restore the hall and support its use as a revitalized cultural center for the community. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 23?
Paul Roar, 11 Lincoln Street. And I want to apologize to everyone. I've been quick with everything else. This one's not as quick. Can we go back to the presentation that Mr. Bressard made, the slide about the year-by-year what we've already spent on the hall? A question about that first.
Oh, perfect.
Yes, this one. Looking at this, there's a clear error on 2018. $120,000 for parking design was not for, was not parking design. There were two articles. I remember them vividly because four years ago, we had this, what is essentially the same debate. Is it time to do some quantity of repairs for the hall? And how much parking does that hall need? At the time, there were two articles on the warrant, one about parking, which got voted down for reasons I'll explain in a minute, and one about accessibility and, so elevator access and HVAC to make the facility more usable year-round for more people. If people remember, I got a big laugh that night for vote, for jumping up and supporting wholeheartedly the elevator after leading a fairly contentious conversation about whether the parking plans made sense. So the $120,000 that you see there for parking design is actually for elevator and HVAC design. And my first question is, did that ever get done? And do we have those results?
Apologies, Mr. Roar, and a credit to you for your attention to detail. I will, I do confirm that that was for the construction docs related to emergency egress, elevator, air conditioning, and heating upgrades. And yes, the work was done. I can't speak to the level of detail of it, but I do know that we did use that as part of the efforts to inform all of the requests to come as well.
So our 500 should be less than designing an elevator system and HVAC system from scratch because we at least did some amount of it with that first 120?
Yeah, or said the other way, the 500 would be a larger request if we hadn't done that work before.
I tried to make it positive and say we saved money, but whatever. The other one, other question is, in 2014, I believe there was a conditions assessment for $95,125 that was done with CPA money. Did that not happen?
I just completely did that, so I apologize, Danielle, if you're doing that.
I never know when things get appropriated, whether they actually happen.
Yep, sure.
Sorry.
That's okay. I am, I do not have, yes, Stephanie is the...
It is, okay, cool.
That's the needs assessment, which was effectively a feasibility study.
Exactly, yeah. I just want to make sure we get credit for that, for that having been done. So the issue that, so then my big question is, actually, if you go back one, was this the site, if you go back one slide there?
That's the next article.
That's the next article?
That's the next article.
So we can't, so we can't see that image for the next article? Because we're being asked...
Moderator.
So I'll ask a question directly to the moderator. When we debated these things four years ago, there were two issues. One was contentious that had to do with parking-related issues.
I remember.
And one that was unanimous and very quick, it was like snap, to take care of things within the hall. The main question about parking is whether it's suitable. This picture's kind of nice because you can see in the dark to the right there, all those trees behind the hall. Those are what are going to have to get clear-cut to put, if the parking lot is going to extend back behind the hall. That's a, that's going to be a big change to our neighborhood for those of us who live near there. I mean, I'm in a butter, so it affects me more, but it affects everyone who's in that, in that area. If you look at historical pictures of this building, ever since it was founded, for the first few years when it was built, there were not trees back there because there were construction buildings back there. There was forest before the construction, there was forest after the construction. This will be the first time we're deliberately taking down the forest for parking. That's a choice we can make, but that's a big choice. So the question I have for the moderator, I believe the next thing showed where this parking is.
So the next, the next slide has to do with the next article.
Has to do with the next article.
So we're going to stay on this article for now, and we're going to finish this article, and then we can move to the next article.
Okay, so I'm not able to, so we're not able to use that information of a map that talks about the parking features of this proposal? Because this proposal is talking about doing parking design, which my understanding is that's some fraction of that $500,000. That's not just for the building.
You are correct, and I think that's very important, that it is a small fraction of the $507,000. I believe it's estimated to be less than 20% and is covered with outside planning, including the consideration of parking. And this isn't for the approval of the project to fund that.
Agreed.
This is just for plans so that as we go through the process to understand and develop our options, to understand what the best use might be, we'll be prepared while we already have the appropriate professionals there on site to do that. So just that, to clarify, this is just about doing planning.
And I can only refer back to the past history, a previous meeting of town, of town, previous version of town meeting four years ago, where we decided there was not enough information to move ahead with design for a parking lot at that time. And because these are folded into one particular thing, and I don't have a budget line, I'm not going to try and make an amendment to cut that out, I just was wondering whether we could even see what that is or whether we just need to approve the entire lump sum without discussing the parking issues until the next article. That's a ruling by the moderator about whether we can see the map or not.
So I don't, I don't mind showing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, and to be clear, the reason why there are two articles is because there's two pieces here.
Yes. There's a whole other piece. I don't want to talk about any issues about the lease.
Sure. So Article 23 is a funding article for CPA to have the necessary funds to do the detailed design work necessary so that, to an earlier point that you made, we measure twice and cut once.
Yes.
When we come back to town meeting next year, we have accurate construction numbers. The feasibility study that this body did fund was unequivocally clear that expanded parking must be a component of any serious attempt to not only preserve the historic exterior of this beloved building, but if we actually want to see a return on your investment, because that will cost a significant sum of money to do, that if we are serious about this hall being able to be utilized more regularly, let alone in an ADA-accessible manner, that the existing 12 parking spots, which we would never permit for a modern building of this size, are not sufficient. So the Article 23 is to fund that detailed design to have professionals and to thoughtfully look at that land. The town-owned land behind it, which is highlighted on the map above, you are correct, there are trees on it. One of the issues of contention at that town meeting was that the design funding at that point was kind of standalone, just looking at parking. And some of the feedback we heard was, why isn't this part of a more comprehensive approach? This is that more comprehensive approach. So this is the map. Article 23 is for design funding, as with any other project. If that were approved, and then if Article 24 fails, we would simply adjust the design and any unspent funds would go back to the CPC. Article 24 is a general article that would have town meeting authorize the town through the Select Board to petition the state for a direct lease and/or do a sale for the land that the town owns behind that property for purposes of potentially having parking. The reason we're doing it both now is so that if we fund the detailed design, which comes back saying the same thing that other assessments have said, which is you need parking, we don't want to then have to go to a special town meeting because these processes are administrative and they're burdensome, they take time. We don't want to, while interest rates are rising every month and while construction costs are rising every month, lose six to 12 months of getting going on construction if the voters want that to happen because we didn't seek this authorization.
Thank you for putting the map up. All I wanted to clarify is that the 500 will be spent, leave the map up just for a second so I can finish making this point, and then we'll go back. This is all of that, and then we can discuss parking afterwards. I'm going to shut up about parking now. Is that the two green lots to the left with the arrows are town-owned property, which would have to be converted by the next article now or later to actually build a large, a large, as big a parking lot as we're looking for. So part, the 20% or so that Mr. Bressard was talking about is spent for design on those green lots. If that doesn't pass, then you won't need that money, I guess. If 24 doesn't pass, you don't need the money. The rest of it is for the parcel to the right there that's actually Oaks Ames Mall, under, Oaks Ames Hall, which is just under that bright blue arrow. So we're voting on 500 of which, most of which is on the hall. It's all one project, as you, as you so ably described. Did I summarize that correctly?
I'm just going to let you finish all of your comments, and then that way I can make my comments back, and then we can get to other folks.
So the only, the final comment that I want to make is I want to thank you guys for getting the Oaks Ames 2015 master plan up. I saw it there for the first time this past Thursday, but it is there. There's multiple hundreds of pages. That's very lovely. Thank you for getting that online. I had not seen it before that. None of my neighbors along this side of the street have seen it before. When I was out talking to the neighbors across the street, they had no idea any of this was going on. So I don't know whether any of them made it here tonight because I was literally knocking on doors at 5:00 today. So thank you for doing, thank you for putting that up so we know what we're talking about. I'll be quiet now. I'll just talk about my parking issues in the next issue, in the next article. Thank you.
Is it all right if I respond to Mr. Roar with just some points? First of all, I do want to say thank you, Mr. Roar, for your engagement. You were present when we held our outreach for people in the community to come and learn about this project, and we have really endeavored truly hard to be thoughtful for all of the audiences. The one thing that I do want to point out is similar in nature, the Article 24, as we were able to successfully leverage the property behind the Queeset House, behind the library, where we are able to go and now park and enjoy that asset, the Queeset Gardens. So it's a very similar to that, which I'm sure back in that day as well, there was consideration as to what that natural state of the land looked like and whether or not there was the value to that. So I do appreciate your engagement and just wanted to say that.
So the only thing I'd like to add, and actually, this is a question to CPC, you guys voted to recommend this before there was any community involvement. The community involvement meeting happened after you voted recommend this phase, and I would ask that you guys insist on community involvement from neighbors on both sides of the street, not just the one side of the street that got invited to that, so we have true neighborhood involvement before we come back to town meeting for the large project. I think we'll have a much better project, just from what I was discussing with, you know, you see probably 10 or 12 houses there. I got to six or seven of them. Most were surprised, most were unhappy, and were all proposing ideas to me as though I have any power whatsoever to change things. So I would ask that CPA, before you make recommendations on the full project next year for the full funding, which is what, six, eight, 10? I don't know how many millions of dollars that's going to be next year, that you get us involved thoroughly in that process because we want to make sure that our neighborhood works and functions as well as possible. Thank you.
Appreciate that. And just one, I apologize, one last reply, just so that folks know, Mr. Roar, you know as well, there have been over 25 meetings that pertain to Oaks Ames Memorial Hall, and the CPC has certainly helped publicly, and folks are absolutely welcome to join. Our meetings are posted, and I would absolutely encourage anybody that has questions or thoughts to reach out. Mr. Roar, I am being thoughtful and respectful, and I don't want this to be a last-word thing, but I do know we have several other people that have some important things to say as well.
So we're on Article 23, correct?
Yes.
I've been looking at this. So Greg Strange again, and I just want to say, as someone...
So Greg Strange again, and I just want to say, someone was on a number of committees in town. You know, we're not, whether on CPA or Planning Board or Historical, you know, we're in the community, not a day goes by that I don't have someone calling me, emailing me, emailing me or stopping by my house, and that's the same for all these folks up here. And I've spoken to a lot of the folks in this neighborhood about this parking lot over the last four or five years, because frankly, I put it, I put it on myself that it fell through a few years ago. Always need to build consensus. We had a million zoning articles going through, and Stephanie and I talked to her, we haven't heard, I think we can still get it through, and that backfired. But we're going to spend probably eight to 11 million dollars on Oakseames Hall in the next year or two. And, you know, these buildings are a blessing and a curse, right? They're wonderful, one of a kind, but they're, but they're expensive. It's time we as taxpayers, you know, we're never going to have a huge business base, it's, we're a residential tax base, it's pretty much going to stay that way. It's time to start leveraging some of these fantastic gifts that the Ames' and their ancestors gave us. And if this building, a building of this size was before us at Planning Board right now, it would be required to have about 140 parking spaces. This has like roughly 12, and they're, you know, they're, they're kind of sketched out. The trees, you know, Olmsted, that was, behind the hall was never built out in his vision. There's not a tree out, the average age of the trees out there is about 60 to 80 years old. And, you know, I understand, we all abut property, but we have a responsibility when we purchase a property, especially for our house. We need to know what we abut and, you know, see what, I live next to power lines, and I know, boy, they're going to clear-cut that, and they're going to hit that with a lot of chemicals every year, and those trees are going to come down. And, you know, I have a new neighbor, and we had wonderful buffer between us, and oh, they just took it all down. You know, it pains me. But, as someone who's pretty involved in things in town, if we're, if you, if we're lucky enough tonight that you give us a vote for this, this would be, first of all, this will be going through public hearings at the Planning Board, as any site plan review does. And this isn't just going to be a parking lot, this would be a parking lot that adds to that wonderful campus that's been created. 35 years ago, I stumbled on those gardens with my son in the woods, and I remember as, as people started to talk about, we need to restore those gardens, people, oh, no, we can't take those trees down. And you look at that now, that's one of the most visited sites in town. Proms go there, weddings go there, teams go there. It's a magnificent campus, we just, we need to, we need to be business-minded, and if we're going to spend that kind of money, we need to make it a little more viable, make it a little, sorry Fred, make it less the white elephant that it's been since it was built, and, and have some parking so they, they can improve their programming, and maybe, you know, and unify the campus, maybe take a little pressure off the camp, the parking at the library, so we can really enjoy those landscapes. So we would appreciate your support, and the town will have a huge say, the townspeople in, in the parking lot going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, I think you are next. I think you are next, sir.
Thank you. Dale Carister, 21 South Street. I'm speaking in favor of all of the articles relative to Oakseames Hall. This is truly a treasure in town, and it's been an untapped treasure, really, the potential has not been fully tapped. I've spent years working with the Boy Scouts at the Holiday Festival, putting in for craft fairs, and trying to coordinate getting the limited number of cars in to get the crafters unloaded. We recently had a Holiday Festival concert there the Friday night. We think about the Holiday Festival, one of the, another treasure of the town, this is the signature item that you see. I appreciate the concerns as in the butter, there are two large projects going in where we're located. One will be up to 20 homes in the fields and forests sort of across the street from me, and then there's Rick Lincoln's project nearby. When I bought in 1993, I went into the town clerk's office, got a copy of the zoning things to see what potentially could happen, and two years finding out that property was going to sell across the street, I started planting trees. You know, it's like, there's only so much we can do, but this truly is for the benefit of the entire town. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Bill Ames, I live at 50 Main Street. There's been a lot of, some talk with previous speakers about the abutters on the parking lot. I'm on the board of the library, and I represent what I guess is by far the largest and longest abutter to that parking lot, and I can assure you, we think it is a wonderful idea, as was Mr. Strange alluded to. There is a lot of traffic at Queesit Garden, and the library, and Queesit House, and a parking lot like this would have a tremendous synergistic, as they say, benefit all the way around. And I can't think that it would be a very, not a good idea to blink at this moment, as it's been referred to over there, with this tremendous potential here for us all. Takes me back to 2000, was mentioned earlier, when the CPA was first passed, when Billy Williams, Mike Seitz, Jim Fowler and others, and many of us collected signatures for the CPA to get passed at town meeting, not at a town ballot, and it just barely did, and we worked very hard, and it made it. And I don't think any of us who were in the Shaw's parking lot or Roach Brothers ever could have dreamed at that point what we're seeing in front of us now, that these fences and these buildings are being saved and expanded for the benefit of future generation East. So I think it's extremely important that we all vote in favor of these articles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Fogel, 5 Chickadee Lane. I'm in favor of the project overall, I just want to say a couple of things. I was at that meeting that Paul referenced, there was a lot of objections to the parking because it really negatively impacted the abutters. I'm not one of them, I do like trees, but I just want people to know, there was a lot of negative, negative opinion about that. Second of all, for other history, we just paid for a $25,000 parking study not so long ago that said there was plenty of parking downtown, so I don't know if there's a parking crisis here or not, but just for people to know, we have paid for these studies recently.
Thank you. Any other, go ahead.
I think that's a good point, and I just want to add to that, that Nelson Nygaard's study that was just referenced noted that in sheer numbers, there is a lot of parking downtown, but that a large amount of it is privately owned, that for certain uses, particularly things like restaurants, where folks are, you know, going to park and walk, that working out lease agreements and things of that nature could help ease the burden there. I think that it is important to note that in the study specific to this property, it did specifically say how critical parking is, and when you think about the type of events that you would like to see at a hall like this, you think about a wedding, and people who are paying thousands and thousands and thousands for a venue are not going to do that if their grandparents need to park on a grass hill and walk up it. So, there is parking in the area, and that can be a potential part of it. But one of the benefits here is that this will just kind of add to that net availability of parking for the entire campus and the downtown. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments or concerns relative to Article 23? All right, seeing none, Article 23 requires a simple majority. All of those in favor of Article 23, please raise your orange cards, and all of those opposed. And Article 23 passes by majority. Article 24.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to either lease certain parcels of land identified as 5 theater away, map 16U parcel 162, and 0 theater away, map 16U parcel 159A, said leased for the purpose of establishing parking facilities, or in the alternative to petition the General Court to enact the special legislation authorizing such lease as printed in the warrant under Article 24. Provided however, that the town administrator shall be empowered to accept non-substantive amendments to the special act, as may be directed by the General Court.
Second.
By way of explanation, previous studies have identified the lack of onsite parking as a key inhibitor to the hall's capacity for public use. In order for the restoration of Oakseames Memorial Hall to fully activate the capacity of the hall to host functions and offer community programming, additional parking is essential. This article will allow the town to lease lands to the hall for the purposes of constructing a modern, accessible parking area to support the programming at the hall. This will help support the hall as a more financially sustainable and viable cultural and community center, and is in the interest of the town's continued investments of CPA funds and the restoration efforts of this asset. When events are not occurring, this additional parking would also provide public parking for the downtown and library campus area. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments or concerns relative to Article 24?
Yes. Paul Rohr, 11 Lincoln Street. So let's talk parking. Right now, the hall is the, is the purple building or pink building just over the dark blue arrow on the right. There are 12, as currently striped, there are 12, 12 spots in that lot. The hall's master plan from 2015, as of last, that I found as of last Thursday, has several alternatives that expand that lot up to 19. That's not enough for an, for an event that, for a hall that has, their major space has two, has 200 people, 200 people per their own website. So 200 people, 19 spots, that's not enough. So how do they have events now? They, as, as mentioned, they park on the grass along that driveway coming up from Barrow Street on the right in the middle, halfway up the rockery, see that green triangle? They park in the, two sets of parking along Barrows and Main there, on the edges of the rockery. Because that is not striped for head-in parking, which is the way it's used during the day, people coming for events don't know, and if they park head-in, they get like 18 or 19 spots, if they park parallel, they get six or eight spots. Currently, they do sometimes tell events to do overflow parking back to the library lot, which you can see up at the top there, you can't see the, the Queesit House ones, which is, which is more, but the library, the library hall campus with a simple walkway connecting over land owned by the hall and the library, they could share the parking between them to get the total amount of parking accessible in that vicinity, in that close radius, over the 60 spots you want to have in those two green areas. So what we're being asked to do tonight is give away that land now for a 60, where we haven't done the design, that's what we just voted for, we voted for the design to see how feasible it is, whether there's ledge behind there, hint, there is. My house is number 11 down there, but you can ask any of these, any of the, any of my neighbors down the street, there's a lot of ledge on that hill back there. So they're going to have to figure out what they do there, but somewhere upwards towards 60, they can get by just adding a path, which they've recognized as either option one or option two, that they can link those two parking lots, expand the one on the, on the land they have without changing or cutting down a single tree that hasn't been cut down already, and properly using the available parking on the street. So I think when we talk about the hall only has 12 spots or 13 spots, depending how you count, that's a little disingenuous. They have more, and they easily could have much more without taking this down. So what I'm going to ask everyone here to do is follow the wisdom of the much longer debate we had about this four years ago, because not a single blessed thing has changed since then, vote this down. We don't need to get this done right now, we don't know if parking there makes sense, no one here has made a good, strong argument for how much money is going to be brought into that hall with, with that million and a half dollar parking lot that we would be building back there. We lose those trees, we lose that setting for this historic building, it's gone forever. So if that's not enough, if that alone is not enough for you to be concerned, at no point, not four years ago, not in the four years in between, not since the meeting I've had there, has anyone talked about the safety of that driveway entering into Barrow Street. I happen to know what that is because, because I share the use of that driveway. I've had one car totaled by someone rear-ending me trying to turn into that, in the month of March, in front of my house at that intersection of Barrows and Lincoln. There were two fairly significant accidents. A few days before the meeting that I had with, the neighborhood meeting that I alone had with, I think 10 people from the town, there was an accident just up at the edge along, along where Barrows and Main come together, that took out, remember the one that took out the power lines? Did a number on the rock, on that ornamental rock wall up there. This is not, the, people go fast through here, and putting 60 cars in and out of there anytime other than during an event is a bad, bad idea. If it's a pitch dark, 10:00, 10:30 at night when something gets over, yeah, people can trickle out of there, it's not going to be a problem. But traffic there during the daytime is a big, big problem. And since there's not been a traffic study, not in 2005 when the library wanted to bring something out, bring, bring an exit out there, not in 2018 when we lasted, when this last came up, not any time in the four years since then, this, agreeing to lease that land for a parking lot now is premature, it's not necessary, and let's get the actual information we need in order to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the thoroughness of, of those comments. I want to just clarify a few pieces there. First is in regards to the library's parking. The Executive Director of the library was at that community meeting where we did send letters to all of the directly abutting properties, and then sent follow-up letters to those who did not attend, and the library was not in favor of the notion that we just create a path and have the library's parking then support the hall. I mean, that is something that through the design process, we could look at as a potential sharing for the benefit of the campus, but the library's director was clear that that was not something they were favorable towards as the complete solution. As far as safety, we all here share that exact concern. First, some statistics, there are 12,000 vehicle trips a day pass through this area, and while all crashes are horrible, and I am terribly sorry about the one that occurred in your driveway, there's been six crashes in the past five years in that area, which is about .4 per million vehicles that go on that intersection, which is below the state average. That area obviously does have a pretty strange traffic pattern. We do have a traffic safety committee in East End, that is the police chief, local works director, we have engineers look at these things when concerns come in, and as part of the detailed design, if the engineers, in looking at this, raise that, we absolutely could then do additional study. But I just want to be clear that this would be vetted through the Planning Board process, they have the authority that if there are concerns from police, fire, DPW, that they could call for an additional traffic study. But to be clear, this is an area of town, it's one of the busiest, you have 12,000 trips per day, a 60-vehicle lot hypothetically represents half of 1% of an increase to that.
And just to add on to that same idea, of those six...
Mr. Rohr, I'm going to stop.
One of those six was using this hallway, was using this driveway.
Excuse me, Mr. Rohr, I'm going to stop you now, because I gave you a lot of latitude on the last article, and at the very beginning of the town meeting, I said that gather your thoughts and speak only once, so I'm going to ask, ask that you stop now. Thank you.
Hi, just Ian Dunbar, the Executive Director of the Amchee Library, just to follow up on Connor's comments. The library itself hosts a lot of functions and events after hours that do overlap with the halls, so that is why we said that the sharing of parking or using our parking lot would just be, not be a sustainable interest to either things, because there would just be too much overlap and not enough for any one event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments or concerns relative to Article 24? Okay, seeing none, Article 24 requires a two-thirds majority vote. All of those in favor of Article 24 passing, please raise your orange cards, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article 24 passes by two-thirds majority. Article 25.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board to amend the zoning bylaw subsection 235-60 and subsection 235 appendices 8-1 and 8-2, as printed in the warrant supplement titled "Zoning Amendments, Subsection 235."
Second.
By way of explanation, this amendment adds self-storage as a use by special permit in the designated business districts, and adds a definition for self-storage. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and zoning board.
Planning and zoning recommends.
Any questions, comments or concerns relative to Article 25? Okay, seeing none, Article 25 requires a two-thirds majority. All of those in favor of Article 25, please raise your orange cards. And all those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article 25 passes by two-thirds majority. Article 26.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board to amend the zoning bylaw subsection 235-51, as printed in the warrant supplement titled "Zoning Amendments, Subsection 235."
Second.
By way of explanation, this amendment adds outside dining as an allowed use in the Queesit Smart Growth Overlay District, Subzones B and C. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning recommends.
Any questions, comments or concerns relative to Article 26? Seeing none, Article 26 requires a two-thirds majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article 26 passes by two-thirds majority. Article 27.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board to amend the zoning bylaw subsection 235, appendices 8-1, 8-2, as printed in the warrant supplement titled "Zoning Amendments, Subsection 235."
Second.
By way of explanation, this is a housekeeping item that corrects the table of use regulations to be consistent with the text of the zoning bylaw subsection 235.14. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Zoning and planning.
Planning and Zoning recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 27? Article 27 requires a two-thirds majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card, and all those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article 27 passes by two-thirds majority. Article 28.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board to amend the zoning bylaw subsection 235-37F3 as printed in the warrant supplement titled "Zoning Amendments, Subsection 235."
Second.
By way of explanation, this amendment provides clarity relative to front yard setback requirements for flexible development subdivisions. Currently, the text of section, subsection 235-37 specifically allows the Planning and Zoning Board the ability to reduce side and rear yard setbacks, but is silent on front yard setbacks. This change states that front yard setbacks and a flexible development shall be at least 25 feet unless specifically allowed otherwise by the Planning and Zoning Board. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and Zoning.
Planning and Zoning recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 28? Seeing none, Article 28 requires a two-thirds majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article 28 passes by two-thirds majority. Article 29.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board to amend the zoning bylaw subsection 235, appendix A-1 and A-2 by, as printed in the warrant supplement titled "Zoning Amendments, Subsection 235."
Second.
By way of explanation, this is a housekeeping item to correct the table of use regulations to be consistent with the zoning bylaw text, subsection 235.39. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and Zoning Board.
Planning and Zoning recommends.
Article 29. Any questions, comments, or concerns on Article 29? Okay, seeing none, Article 29 requires a two-thirds majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article 29 passes by two-thirds majority. Article 30.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board to amend the zoning bylaw subsection 235, appendix B, as printed in the warrant supplement titled "Zoning Amendments, Subsection 235."
Second.
By way of explanation, this is a housekeeping item eliminating a dimensional standard that would unintentionally render existing properties within the district non-conforming. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and Zoning Board.
Planning and Zoning recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 30? Seeing none, Article 30 requires a two-thirds majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. Article 30 passes by two-thirds majority. Article 31.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board to amend the zoning bylaw subsection 235-44C, number four, as printed in the warrant supplement titled "Zoning Amendments, Subsection 235."
Second.
By way of explanation, this amendment allows in-law apartments to have a front entrance by eliminating the requirement that a new entrance to an in-law apartment must be located on the side or rear of the building. Select Board recommend.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and Zoning Board.
Planning and Zoning recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 31? Seeing none, Article 31 requires a two, a simple majority. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. Article 31 passes by majority. Article 32.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board to amend the zoning bylaw subsection 235-18C as printed in the warrant supplement titled "Zoning Amendments, Subsection 235."
Second.
By way of explanation, this is a housekeeping article to provide clarity on allowed accessory structures in the residential district. Select Board recommend.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and Zoning.
The Planning and Zoning Board met on April 4, 2022, and voted 3-0 in favor to recommend Article 32.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 32? Seeing none, Article 32 requires a two-thirds majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article 32 passes. Article 33.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Board to amend the zoning bylaw subsection 235, appendix A-2, as printed in the warrant supplement titled "Zoning Amendments, Subsection 235."
Second.
By way of explanation, this amendment is a housekeeping item that corrects the ratio of office, retail, or restaurant uses to residential use for a mixed-use development in the Queesit Commercial District to be consistent with the earlier reference in the code of 1/3. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and Zoning Board.
The Planning and Zoning Board met on April 4, 2022, and voted 3-0 in favor of recommending Article 33.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 33? And seeing none, Article 33 requires a two-thirds majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card.